Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance slide by Councilman Delano Hornbuckle.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Here, President.
Councilman Hart.
Yes.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
President.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart.
Here.
Kothem Sampi is absent, excused. President McDermott.
Here.
A quorum is present.
All right. We will now start off tonight's meeting with a special announcement and presentation from a new nonprofit organization that has just formed, Westland, and our colleague, Councilwoman Baumann, will be here with a group to tell us all about it.
Hello. My name is Amber Gilbert. A lot of you know me. I am a resident, a small business owner in Westland, and I sit on another board of another nonprofit, as well as this new one that has just developed, and we're here to tell you a little bit about today. Our new nonprofit is called the Westland Arts Foundation. It is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and its mission is to encourage and support other organizations in the city of Westland that are focused on the arts through fundraising, through business support, education, and community engagement. Our board consists of three citizens in Westland who are invested in the arts, as well as two honor students from Schoolcraft College. Through engaging the community and increasing the arts in Westland, we hope to support existing arts and culture organizations, encourage new ones to form. We would love to see things happen like a new youth choir or an orchestra come to fruition, some art festivals, and other such fun things. Go ahead. Okay. So, our core beliefs are that engaging in art has the ability to enrich, lies, uplift communities, and can increase the physical, mental, and economic health of that community. So, our goal is to do all of that for the city of Westland. An impact for the republic, for the public, we hope that research shows that arts and culture is one of the main pillars of thriving communities, communities with vibrant, visible, and public art in all of its forms, up to the individuals and businesses of that community. So, in 1999, Chicago had cows. In 2001, horses paraded around Rochester, New York. In 2004, fantastic fills started seeing their shadow in Punxsutawney, Pennsylvania. These are all examples of community art projects that cities did. There's over 300 different cities since projects that have been on since I started doing the research and things like that. Austin, many other cities have done these community art projects. And what it's done is it brings the community together in a fun, energetic, and economically enhancing ways. And then, in the spirit of these projects that went before us...
The Wayne Westland Arts Foundation is proud to present to you the Flight of the Eagles. The Flight of the Eagles is a student and residential-led project designed to raise awareness, both to bring business awareness, to support business, and to support the arts, to get involvement from the people, because they'll see these eagles up all over the city. And not only for the time that from, what is it, from Saturday, May 16th, is our big day to really launch this and to celebrate the anniversary of Westland, the 60th. And we want to display these beautiful eagles out, and for people to be able to wake up and to see these, to come visit them, to show, to draw the interest in the parallels of the eagles, and that each artist will get to design a specific eagle, so there won't be just one eagle that is just scattered out looking the same. There are three different eagles, and they'll be designed by art students. Businesses will be able to select these, design they want, and work with their individual artists. We'll also be having a book that will commemorate all of this, that will show every eagle and the artist and the designs. We'll also be promoting this with a scavenger hunt, a special design where people will get incentives to go to each eagle and see what they're about, and to scan a code, and it just tells a little bit about the eagle and the design and the artist. So, several months, they'll be on display in the fall. We will hold a public auction for people to be able to actually purchase the eagles for themselves, and they'll be able to take their eagles if they want to buy an eagle, and display it anywhere they want, in front of their business, and that is our Flight of the Eagles.
Okay. So, we've already met with several art groups in the area, and they love the project and are excited to get involved with that. But we also want to put a call out for individuals of all ages that are artists and would like to be involved in the program. If you are an artist and you would like to submit a design to see if it gets chosen to be one of the eagles of any age, you can go to westlandarts.org, send a contact form to us, and we will get the information for art submission to you. Okay.
Thank you very much. We are so excited to be working with the city and with art groups in the city and to be starting this project. We will be here if anybody asks questions, and thank you for having us.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. All right. We will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from your Westland City Council. Is there anyone on my left? Mr. Warren?
Since you asked for me. Good evening. Under new business, is this approval of, I thought we had contractors cleaning our streets. Do we not, or are the city going to take over the aspect of cleaning our streets? And down here on number four, are there any drawings, anything of, once we receive these monies, are there any drawings of the enhancement of those intersections? And that's my two questions on, under new business.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone on my right input on the agenda? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? All right. Seeing and hearing none, we will close input on the agenda and move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
There's a motion.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the study session held February 25, 2025. Approval of request from St. Mary's Cause of Our Joy Catholic Church to serve beer at their Polka Mass and Dinner event to be held at the church on March 30, 2025. Approval to use Teleflex as a sole provider as an emergency medical supply vendor for the fire department. Fire Department currently has six different product types from Teleflex in use, and will also utilize this approval to update those assets when necessary. The subscription will be effective for three years. Last item approved on the consent calendar, approval of golf cart leasing arrangement with Piper Incorporated to provide the Mac Mayfield Golf Course with a total of 31 golf carts. This subscription will be effective for a five-year period in an amount of a rate of $685 per cart. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
There's a motion by Councilman Wishart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter? Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes.
Moving to new business. Item one, approval of minutes of closed study sessions, February 18, 2025.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, who supported?
Uh, Councilman Wishart.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Abstained, absent.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Kothem Sampi is absent, excused. President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item two, minutes of the regular meeting held February 18, 2025.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
There's a motion by Councilman Hornbuckle, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Any additional discussion from the council? Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann.
Yes.
Councilman Hart.
Abstained, absent.
Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski is absent, excused. Councilman Wishart.
Yes.
Kothem Sampi is absent, excused. President McDermott.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item three, approval of bid for purchase of one replacement street sweeper from M-Tech, utilizing the pricing secured from the cooperative Co-Pro Plus contract. Co-Pro Plus is a purchasing consortium program that's built specifically to benefit cities, counties, and schools. Administration recommended the sole bidder, M-Tech, in an amount not to exceed $293,952.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Yeah, a question was asked about the street sweeper. So, we do have a street sweeper contract with a company that goes throughout the city and cleans the streets as they need to be cleaned. The DPS Department uses a street sweeper as well following water main breaks and break fix and repair. So, we do have one internal street sweeper when we have to do cleanup work following a repair, but the rest of the street sweeping that goes around the city is done on a contract basis. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman, for addressing that. I appreciate that. Is there any discussion from the supporter?
No.
Okay. Any additional discussion from the council? Yes, Councilman Hornbuckle.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I already reached out to finance, so they were able to answer questions. Great for me, but I just want to bring them up to the public know. One of the questions I had was, in 2023, this was on the capital improvement plan for next year, fiscal year. Looked like we're going to be able to do this this fiscal year. I just would like for you to speak on why we're able to do it in this fiscal year instead of next year's, if you could.
Through the chair, yeah, the sanitation fund has funds available to be able to perform or to buy this equipment this fiscal year.
Any other questions?
That's all I have for this one. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes unanimously.
New business. Item four, approval of M.DOT contract number 255042 to receive $1 million in grant funding provided through the legislative earmark, which will enable the city to enhance the intersections of Wayne and Warren and Central City and Wayne. This will match the pedestrian-friendly design of Ford and Wayne and Ford and Central City. The total cost of the project is $1.2 million. The M.DOT grant is $1 million with a balance of $200,000 to be funded within the Meter Act budget.
Is there a motion? Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Baumann, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Just so folks are aware, there is a word "federal" in there that is incorrect. We've already had that discussion with our purchasing director, Devon Adams. That language for federal grant, M.DOT federal grant, is going to be taken out. It's going to say M.DOT grant in the language there. Is there any discussion from the maker?
Are there any, I guess I'm going to ask a question, so are there any drawings of this? I think it does say that it's going to be similar. Is it going to be exactly like the ones that says matching? What is, can we, can speak to what matching is it? Is it identical? To the one in Florida?
Thanks, Chairman. Mr. Warren, thank you for the question. The question was, what are these intersection, street scape improvements going to look like? And do we have any drawings yet? We've had preliminary conversations and meetings internally with engineering and kind of looked at the entire segment of Wayne between Warren and Joy Road, and determined that the most effective way to use 1.2, which is really when you look at the entire segment there, not a whole lot of money, we decided to do improvements, pedestrian-friendly design improvements, similar to the intersections at Ford and Wayne Road, and then again Ford and Central City. Will they match exactly? No, there's a lot more right-of-way on the intersections at Ford Road than there is at the intersections on Wayne Road that I mentioned. So, engineering's going to have to play around there, but we're hoping to install some of the same amenities, like the stamped concrete, the shrubs, and maybe even the decorative three-foot fencing there as well. Drawings are not done yet. They haven't started with drawings yet. We are hoping to get the contract approved today and begin working with OHM on quotes and things like that, and before the city approves the engineering drawings, we would like to take a look at all of the numbers in the quotes first. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are you, any other questions? Any questions from the supporter?
Yeah, I just have one question on the, well, two questions. It says Meter Action Budget. Is this supposed to be Metro?
Yeah, that was, yeah, it should be Metro.
Okay. The two corners that we're proposing doing, is there a reason why we picked those two?
Well, thank you, Councilman. So, just a little bit of background, during the 2023-2024 state budget, there was some funds on the table in their transportation budget. I had a conversation with some appropriations folks in Lansing, and $1 million was this grant, and they, in our discussions, we specifically talked about wanting to beautify Wayne Road, specifically North Wayne Road between Joy and Warren. And so, these, you know, cleaning up the look of our Shop and Dine District and Wayne Road was really why that area was chosen. Obviously, there's some need for beautification in other parts of the city, and we've identified other intersections that we want to work on in the future as well, so.
Okay. I'm just curious, you know, just curious, how come we didn't focus more on, like Marquette, where we have kids getting hit? Make that area a little nicer so the kids won't have a problem going to school, but...
Well, we're actually adding lighting to that intersection this year. Yep, yep.
No problem. I think that's all I have, just curious. Thank you.
All set?
Yep.
All right. Councilman Hart.
Yeah, Council President, thank you. Councilman Hornbuckle addressed the first thing. Yeah, it's the Metro Act, not the Meter Act, so I don't think we have any meters being acted upon in the city that I'm aware of. So, what is a Metro Act, really quick? So, the Metro Act is basically a fee that's paid by all registered utilities and our utility rights of way. So, all those lines that they put underground and all the power lines that they put in our, basically, we call it the boulevard on the main roads between the sidewalk and the road. That's considered utility easement. Utilities put their utilities in there, and they pay us a small little piece every year that goes into our fund, which we can only use for projects in those same affected areas. So, a big influx that we've got is if you've seen all the small cells that the cellular carriers put up in those areas, there's a big piece that comes from that as well. So, that's where that funding comes from. That's what the Metro Act is, and that's what we're using it for. That's it. Thank you, Council President.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none? Motion passes unanimously.
New business. Item five, approval of proposed rezoning from OB, Office Business District, to R2, Single Family Residential District, 32730 Palmer Road. This is the southeast corner of Vinoy and Palmer, and Planning Department number 2271. Administration recommends approval of the proposed rezoning.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Your support? Motion by Councilman Hornbuckle, supported by Councilman Wishart. Director Ayub?
Thank you, Council President. The subject parcel here is zoned OB. That's our Office Business District. It contains 28,000 square feet and is currently undeveloped, highlighted in, or outlined in yellow on your screen. The property was recently split from the parcel to the north. This parcel right here, it was once combined, but once recently split with the parcel to the north, and that parcel contains a medical office building. We recently had, last year, a grand opening there for a medical office. That parcel contains frontage on Wayne. This parcel contains frontage on Palmer. Tonight, the petitioner and property owners are requesting to rezone the property to R2 from Office Business. R2 is our single-family residential district, and this is in order to split the property into three buildable, single-family residential parcels to facilitate the development of single-family dwellings. This is the rezoning case, and next on your agenda is the land division if this is approved. Adjacent land uses and zoning in the immediate adjacent areas. Property to the north is zoned OB, just discussed it, and developed by that medical office building. Property to the east is zoned R2, Single Family Residential. There's that parking lot to the adjacent church. Property to the south, across the street from Palmer, is zoned R2 and single, and developed with single-family residences. Property to the west is CB4 Vehicle Service and developed by a vehicle repair shop. The subject property is currently undeveloped, as mentioned, and the site has been zoned OB for at least three decades. There have been one inquiry in the past six years since I've been here to develop the property for industrial development, truck and trailer parking specifically, that I believe was turned down by the Planning Commission, and I'm not sure whether it ever made it here or not. The future land use designation for this property via the master plan is neighborhood commercial office services, so this rezoning is not consistent with this designation. However, the Planning Commission and administration both recommend approval due to the lack of interest in developing this property for both office and commercial, and due to the adjacent area across the street being residential, and the church next door being zoned R2 residential, and also not wanting the residential area across the street, which is residential, to be negatively impacted by any commercial, if there ever was a development of that nature to come forward. That is all I have. The petitioner is here in the audience today, and I guess the only thing I will add is the proposed land division, again, is proposing three fully compliant lots with the zoning ordinance, and they're about 69 feet wide. The zoning ordinance for the R2 district requires 60-foot-wide parcels. Be happy to answer any questions if you have. Thanks.
Would the petitioner like to come forward, too? And before I turn the council loose, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Oh, not just, hello, everybody. I am the builder for the, and represent the owner on that project, and he tried as a commercial, but he got a really hard time to rent the medical office on that, so he pleaded and sold the part, and now he thinks it's better for him and for the city to turn that residential and building three houses. He planning around 1,500 square feet house with two-story with a basement there.
Okay. Any questions from the maker? Anything from the supporter?
No, at the time, just after seeing the houses.
Okay. Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Mo, just worried about parcel A and the setback there from the existing commercial building. What kind of frustrations is that going to cause, if any, for the future housing development? Is it pretty much assumed that since the council approved the parcels, then it's kind of grandfathered in some kind of way? Or is it an issue with that building being right on the property line on the corner? Just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question. That is a commercial building that's existing, and we're not playing around with that parcel, so there's no nonconformities being created or exasperated. However, parcel A, the new home, will have to comply with the setbacks there. That may be something that the new homeowner may want to, or the builder may want to look at, maybe some additional landscaping there to protect any homeowners that want to purchase that property or live there, but that's nothing from a zoning compliance standpoint that is being created.
So, just clarification, so A home that would go on that parcel would have to, of course, have their setbacks from that property line.
Correct.
I guess my next question, I think I know the answer to it already. This kind of goes back to a couple of months ago when we were looking at those micro parcels or those postage-stamped parcels. How did a parcel of land end up being on a property line right where the corner of a building happened? That's usually, we don't allow that. Does that, how did that happen?
How did this commercial building?
Yeah, built right on the corner of a parcel like that.
0.5 inches away? I'm not sure I was not here.
Like I said, I think I know the answer to that question, so this is why the Planning Department and zoning and our Building Department work really hard to try and prevent some of these things from happening, but as you can see, every now and then, we stub our toe on a couple of the weird ones out there. That would qualify as an interesting situation, so. Thank you, Mo. Nothing else, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. My only... I got...
being Zoned R2 Residential, and also not wanting the residential area across the street, which is residential, to be negatively impacted by any commercial, if there ever was a development of that nature to come forward. That is all I have. The petitioner is here in the audience today, and I guess the only thing I will add is the proposed land division, again, is proposing three fully compliant lots with the zoning ordinance, and they're about 69 feet wide. The zoning ordinance for the R2 district requires 60-foot-wide parcels. Be happy to answer any questions if you have. Thanks.
Would the petitioner like to come forward, too? And before I turn the council loose, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Oh, not just, hello, everybody. I am the builder for the, and represent the owner on that project. And he tried as a commercial, but he got a really hard time to rent the medical office and that. So, he pleaded and sold the part. And now, he thinks it's better for him and for the city to turn that residential and building three houses. He planning around 1,500 square feet house with two-story with a basement there.
Okay. Any questions from the maker? Anything from the supporter?
No, at the time, just have to see the houses.
Okay, Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Mo, just worried about parcel A and the setback there from the existing commercial building. What kind of frustrations is that going to cause, if any, for the future housing development? Is it pretty much assumed that since the council approved the parcels, then it's kind of grandfathered in some kind of way? Or is it an issue with that building being right on the property line on the corner? Just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question. That is a commercial building that's existing, and we're not playing around with that parcel. So, there's no nonconformities being created or exasperated. However, parcel A, the new home, will have to comply with the setbacks there. That may be something that the new homeowner may want to, or the new, the builder may want to look at, maybe some additional landscaping there to protect any homeowners that want to purchase that property or live there. But that's nothing from a zoning compliance standpoint that is being created.
So, just clarification. So, A home that would go on that parcel would have to, of course, have their setbacks from that property line.
Correct.
I guess my next question, I think I know the answer to it already. This kind of goes back to a couple of months ago when we were looking at those micro parcels or those postage-stamped parcels. How did, how did a parcel of land end up being on a property line right where the corner of a building happened? And that's usually, we don't allow that. Does that, how did that happen?
How did this commercial building?
Yeah, built right on the corner of a parcel like that.
Point five inches away. I'm not sure. I was not here.
Like I said, I think I know the answer to that question. So, this is why the Planning Department and zoning and our Building Department work really hard to try and prevent some of these things from happening. But as you can see, every now and then, we stub our toe on a couple of the weird ones out there. That would qualify as an interesting situation. So, thank you, Mo. Nothing else, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. My only, I guess, concern would be, and this is more just a note, is that, look, I live right by there, right? So, that auto shop right in the corner has cars lined up all around the auto shop year-round. So, for the person who's going to be living in parcel A ultimately, when that home is, you know, hopefully built, I would have a little bit of concern for them because that auto shop has got cars just junked up and lined around all year-round. So, I think a little, you know, tighter enforcement on ordinance for allowing them to keep cars for only so long at that time, because I've driven by there and seen some of the same cars there for months on end, which is a point of concern if I'm living in parcel A there on a home that's newly built there. That's all I have. Councilman.
I would respond to that. So, while I don't like the parcel of the building, it's one of those things, they were there first, you know? So, it's like when people build a house next to a cell tower that's been there for 20 years and complain about the cell tower. Well, you saw the cell tower when you bought the house. So, I'm not trying to be insensitive to anybody, but I mean, if you're going to buy that parcel, obviously you saw that that auto shop was right next door. So, kind of caveat enter at that point, I would think. So, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? All right. Seeing and hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you. New business. Item six. Approval of proposed land division. Same parcel, same location. This is Planning Department number 2271A. Administration recommends approval with the property to split into three buildable, single-family residential parcels, and everything complies with the minimum zoning requirements of the R2, Single Family Residential District. If approved, council directs the city attorney to draft the necessary land division resolutions.
Is there a motion?
No.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hornbuckle. Director Ayub?
Thank you. I'll just reiterate that these proposed parcels do comply with all of the zoning requirements, and add that the Planning Commission and administration are recommending approval of this proposed land vision. Thanks.
Anything from the maker?
I'm full of them today, Council President. Yeah, just kind of an observation, Mo. So, I would assume, and a good question was raised, and I would agree with it, and again, this is one of those things I think I know the answer to. The drainage ditch that's in front of those, if those are turned into housing parcels, driveway and access, would they have to build, like, the corrugated pipe bridges over the irrigation ditch?
They will have to go through the engineering process to make sure that they are either building above them correctly or making appropriate accommodations for that ditch to be able to properly function. I'm not sure what that looks like from an engineering standpoint, and that's all I can say here on the record.
Sounds to me like, I mean, they'll have a little bit of frustration with their building plan there, especially trying to get the access agreement right there and everything they're going to have to do. Is that, this, correct me if I'm wrong, is that a county? Yeah, that's a county road right there?
Palmer?
Is it Palmer?
Yeah. I do, I do think it's.
I know there's one of the roads that's split.
That ditch will be, though.
That ditch will be, though.
It will be part of the drainage system.
Yeah. That's, I guess that's it, right? That ditch will be part of the Wayne County drainage.
Wayne County drainage system, yes.
Yeah. That'll be fun for the developer. Little FYI.
We will work through it together.
All right. That's it from me, Council President.
Okay. Anything from the supporter? Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? All right. Seeing and hearing none, motion passes.
New business. Item seven. Approval of proposed rezoning of parcel number 56040010603, north side of Warren, east of Merriman. This would be to rezone from CB3, General Commercial Business, to GAR, Garden Apartment Residential, to facilitate the development of a multifamily living community. This is Planning Department number 2272, and administration recommends approval of the proposed rezoning.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart. Director Ayub?
Thanks again. The property here is comprised of a little under two acres in size. It's currently undeveloped. Sort of looks like this. The property is currently, as the clerk said, Zoned CB3. That's our General Commercial Business District. The petitioner tonight is requesting to rezone the property to GAR, Garden Apartment Residential, to facilitate development of a multifamily living community, one that looks, well, a lot smaller, but very similar to the one on the, the ones on the south and the east. Property to the north is Zoned CB3, General Commercial Business, and is part of the Heinz Park Network. Property to the south is Zoned GAR, Garden Apartment Residential, and is developed with Riverbend Apartments over here where my red dot is. Property to the east, GAR as well, Riverbend Apartments as well. And property to the west is Zoned CB3 and is the site of a retail plaza. The subject property, as mentioned, is currently undeveloped. Since my time here, there have been no inquiries for development in the past six years, other than this proposal. The 2018 future land use designation for this site indicates multifamily residential, which is consistent with this proposal. The Planning Commission and administration are recommending approval of this proposed rezoning from CB3 to GAR. The property owner is in the audience today, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the administration.
And would the petitioner like to come up? And before I turn the council loose, do you have anything you would like to add?
Good evening. And, yeah. Thank you for having me here, and I'm looking forward to developing this property. I've owned it for a long time, tried to develop it commercially, and could not find a use for it that would be suitable for that piece of property. And so, I figured I'd make some conformity, something similar to my neighbors'. And that's all.
All right. Anything from maker?
I'm batting a hundred today, so. No, I wanted to go ahead and first of all, express that my, my extreme desire to support this project. Part of it because it just makes sense. It's kind of a no-brainer there, garden apartment, you know, being able to do a residential development. The other part of it is, I've had the privilege for the past eight years to, to know the property owner, and I know that everything he touches, he actually does a phenomenal job on every single property he has. He puts continued attention into it, and it's always, he spares no expense. Not the fastest, but he does, what he sacrifices in time, he definitely makes up for in quality. So, I know that Steve Amati's got his hands on this piece of property. He's going to do a fantastic job. The only thing that would make me happier is that if he came to me and told me that he bought another large parcel in the city on the corner of Warren and Wayne somewhere and did something with that, but we'll save that for another conversation. I'll be happy to support it, Steve. Good luck. Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything from the supporter?
No, I'm just happy to see you building the building first.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else from the council? Mr. Amati, we appreciate you and your continued investment here in the city of Westland. So, thank you very much. This is one of a number of projects you've worked with our city and over the years. So, we very much appreciate your continued investment here economically in Westland. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President.
Any dissent? Any dissent? All right. Seeing and hearing none, motion passes. Good luck. Have a great evening. All right. We are now going to move on to public comment. Everyone speaking before the council shall do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. The speaker can ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until three minutes is up or the person is done speaking, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right, public comment? Anyone? Oh, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Teresa Thomas, and once again, I'm going to, I think I'm going to be a repeat speaker about this, about what is going on in my neighborhood, which is nothing. And I get, you know, kind of, I don't know, a different feeling when I'm always, when I've just been, just recently started coming to the meetings. But it looks like the monies are being spent all around me, and I didn't notice it because I was working. I've been working, and unfortunately, I got sick and I had to retire. So, now I'm looking at the area around where I live. There's been absolutely no improvements in my, in my neighborhood, in my area, absolutely nothing. There's plight where people are leaving. The properties are left unkept. Even people that are living in the properties, it used to be an ordinance person that went around and, you know, made sure that people's property was being kept up. None of that's being done anymore. So, people are just living in squalor. I don't want to be living around people if I'm taking care of my property and other people's, other people are not. So, I'm just hoping that there is something, is there anything that I can do that can initiate, you know, some kind of funding? Or what can I do to help my, my area? I don't want to move. I'm a single person on disability, so I want to stay where I am. I've invested a lot. But at the same token, I don't want to live in an area where it doesn't matter what's going on, and nobody seems to care. Very few, there are a lot of people in that area that have homes that take care of their property. But I feel like if the people are being ticketed, maybe go by, tell them they need to clean up their area. Simple as that. I just want to know, what can I do?
Thank you, ma'am. We'll get to you when we give our council comments. We'll be able to respond to that more and talk about what can be done to help you out in your area.
I'm sorry. Say that again. I'm sorry.
When you, when we have our council comments and the mayor has time for his comments, we will make a comment to let you know more about what can be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening, council members. Mayor John Sullivan, Westland resident attorney, and as you all know, I serve on several boards for the city. I just wanted to speak about one of those boards today. I am currently the chairman of the city's tax review board. Wanted to make sure the residents are aware that the review board is meeting next week. So, this is your one chance in the year to fight your assessments if you feel that your tax assessment is inaccurate. All property owners should have received their tax assessment letter from the assessor's office probably in the last few days. You've seen it. I ask everyone to review that closely. If you have any questions about your assessments, contact the assessor's office. Their contact information is located towards the bottom of the letter. I'd say 90% of people's issues and questions are able to be answered by a simple phone call to the assessor's office without having to file a protest of your assessment. However, if they are not able to answer your questions and you feel your assessment is inaccurate, we'd be happy to take a look at your situation and see what we can do for you. I ask the residents to please be aware that the tax board members, we are city residents. We don't work for the city. We don't work for the assessor's office. We're basically volunteering our time to assist the city with these appeals or the protests that members have. And as much as we would like to lower everybody's taxes, we can't just do that. We have to follow the law. The state has some very strict guidelines that we have to follow, and we can only lower your taxes if you can provide us with evidence that your assessment is inaccurate. If you contact the assessor's office, they can let you know what information that you can provide that we can use to try to lower your assessment. But unfortunately, you can't just come in and say, "Lower my taxes. They're too high." We've had people do that. Wish I had that kind of power, but we do not. We do need you to bring, bring in some evidence that we can use to try to lower your assessment. So, I'm just reminding everyone, this is our one chance of the year. Take a close look at your assessment, and if you have any questions, contact the assessor's office, and feel free to file, to have us review it if your answer, if you can't get the answers from the assessment, assessor's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak on my right? Anyone on my left? Mr. Warren?
Well, good evening again. I want to take counsel back to February 3rd in regards to the excess $10,000 that was denied, the Gassimity and the Carver subdivision. As you may well know, that the Gassimity received $25,000 in ARPA funds, which was stated by the Community Development Director, that disqualified them from receiving community block grant funds. But also, at the same time, the Norwain citizens received $250,000 in ARPA funds, plus another $10,000 for a harvest fest. So, I want to know that those of you, Wishart, Bowman, Hornbuckle, McDermott, and Hart, why did you vote against us receiving those funds? Those funds could have been transferred right down to the park, right down, down the street from us. What qualified Norwain over the Carver subdivision to get those funds when both of them were in violation? So, tell me what qualified them to receive those funds in your mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Yes,
Dan Statchow, Holiday Park. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, police chief, fire chief. Just a couple of points I'd like to address, and I'd like to point them towards Chief Dowley. What is the fine for running stop signs? Do you have any idea?
No, I'm talking about.
Okay. In Holiday Park, we have a couple of areas that you can enter and exit, and there are three stop signs. There are two of them. Don't mean anything because you have to stop or else you're going to run into townhouses. People are running these signs, especially today. I stood out front because of the construction and everything, and it's an issue, and just wondering whether we could get some parking enforcement or traffic enforcement out there for that point. Another issue is the red light, or traffic signal, as you call it, right at the end of the construction area. It turns red. There's people lining up and lining up. They're indecisive as whether they should run the light or whether they should wait for it to change, and it's causing a huge backup, especially since people aren't paying attention to the signage on Colin that says, "Road closed, local traffic only," or whatever. And just wondering whether that traffic signal could get changed for the interim until this construction is done. I understand that the lights are timed to, for flow of traffic, but it doesn't seem senseless to have that flow of traffic when there's nowhere to go. And I believe that's going to be it. I appreciate any comments on that. Thank you very much. Oh, one more thing. One more thing. Sorry about that. I'd like to wish my brother Art Warren a happy birthday. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Selena Felsati, of course, Westland. And I know I've been up here a couple of times. I've heard reference, and I know we've talked about getting new business, how do we, you know, retain the business we have. There's been a lot of conversation about the Westland Mall. Some of it has had to do with the fact that there's been no light safety issues. I know it's been brought up on a lot of our social media boards and stuff. Retaining the business in there, I know there's been, you know, thrown out that this person that owns the building owns seven other buildings, and I've heard reference of, he doesn't maintain it for that purpose. My question to you, what, what are the grounds to get new business in there and possibly, if he's not maintaining the building for safety reasons, finding him or doing something to hold him accountable for it? And I appreciate anyone that can give me those answers. I've walked. I've walked around the building, it's a great gorgeous building, but to see where it's gone from the opening in the 50s and the 60s to right now, when you walk in, it's like a ghost town. So I appreciate any comments, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close public comment and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, council president. Thank you, city council, residents, everybody watching. From the audience, Ms. Thomas, thank you for speaking again this evening. I know we spoke quite a bit after the last council meeting, and I'm aware there's ordinance issues in your neighborhood, and we are talking about doing an ordinance sweep. And so we'll make sure our staff drives through and takes a look. And I know I did tell you that there's going to be a big investment in your neighborhood with the repaving of Grand Traverse Road this spring. Once the weather breaks, you'll see construction pretty quick, should be before summer. And then, I wanted to also mention the Norwayne Community Citizens Council. They meet at the Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, which is a great community center right there on Dorsey in your neighborhood as well. And it's a great volunteer group that does a lot of advocacy and service, community service in the neighborhood. And they're really an awesome group, and we'd be happy to connect you with them if you're interested as well.
Hi, I'm, I'm, I could...
Okay. And then, just want to say thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for the information about the tax assessment issues. Thank you for speaking. Our assessor, Jennifer Stafford, did film a PSA, a public service announcement, which was on the city WLND channel, our Facebook page, and also our YouTube page. So I would just ask residents to check into that as well if you have questions about your assessment. And then I also want to say happy birthday to Mr. Warren. Hope you have a very happy birthday and...
I'm here too.
I, we might be able to work that out. And then, a few other things. Prior to tonight's council meeting, I did attend the swearing-in ceremony for our newest police officers for our Westland Police Department. So I just again want to congratulate Jordan Cutting, Charles Rose, Ethan Case, and Andrew Gonzalez, who are Westland's four newest police officers. So welcome to the team, and you're joining a great department, and the city of Westland looks forward to your service on behalf of our residents and businesses. So thank you, gentlemen, for joining. I'd like to thank every, excuse me, I'd like to thank everyone who came to the last mayor's listening tour, which was at Gassimity Church in February, and we had a great turnout, a lot of new faces in the audience, a lot of great questions and dialogue for our staff. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to invite folks to our March date, which will actually be at Holiday Park Townhouses, at the clubhouse, but it is open to all Westland residents. So you don't have to live at Holiday Park to join. Now, this is the section of Wayne Road that is closed to through traffic because of the construction on the Wayne Road Bridge, but this would be considered local traffic, so you can pass the roadblock there and go down to Holiday Park. And the date on that is Thursday, March 27th at 5:30 PM, again at the Holiday Park Townhouses. I'd like to congratulate Jeff Juneman of Juneman Insurance Agency on his retirement. His agency was doing business in the city of Westland for 43 years, and he's been a great person who gives back to the community, and he's involved in the Westland Rotary and other organizations. So again, congratulations, Jeff. Also, congratulations to Atlas Wholesale Food Company on their recent grand opening. I know some of the city council was able to join us for that. They had a great turnout. This is a wholesale food distributor that decided to put their warehousing and offices and headquarters right here in the city of Westland, actually right near City Hall. So thank you for investing in our community. I'd like to extend my condolences to our community development and housing director, Joanne Campbell, on the loss of her mother, and we would like to ask folks to keep her family in your thoughts during this difficult time. March is reading month, and I'm excited to be visiting some schools for some reading visits. This year, I'll be going to Edison Elementary and Hayes Elementary, and then I'm also going to visit Adams Middle School to talk about public service and government. I got invited to a few other schools in other communities, but I believe as Westland mayor, I should stick to Westland schools. So if your school got turned down for any reason, it's just simply because they weren't located within the limits of the city. But thank you for the invitation. Also, March is Women's History Month, so it's a time to celebrate the remarkable achievements and lasting contributions of women throughout history and in our own community. So please join me to reflect on the profound impact of the women in our, in our lives and loved ones, and honor their invaluable contributions. So thank you to all of the women that lead, uplift, and make a difference here in Westland and throughout the world every day. Friday, March 7th, is Employee Appreciation Day. So I'd like to take this moment to thank all employees in the city of Westland, no matter what department you work for. They play in a very important role in Westland residents, and, you know, they really impact our daily lives. We rely on them to keep the city running, safe, and I just want to thank all the employees for their commitment and great service to our city. Also, Dog Vaccination Day is coming up Saturday, March 15th. It'll be here at City Hall from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. It's open to all Westland residents. In addition to vaccinations, we'll be offering microchipping, and the city clerk's office will be on site for issuing dog licenses. These services are free for Westland veterans with proof of military service, and I'd like to specifically thank the Wayne Ford Civic League and Vic Barrow over there for his, for their donation to make that possible. So thank you, Wayne Ford Civic League. And then last, last news is, is not great news, just the closure of Wayne Road, the bridge over Tonkish Creek between, on the north end of Wayne Road before you get to Joy Road. In addition to the bridge replacement, this project will include pavement resurfacing, installation of new guardrails, storm sewers, and sidewalks. The work will take place along Wayne Road between Cowan Road and Central City Parkway and Joy Road. Wayne will be closed to through traffic, as I mentioned earlier. Access to residences and businesses will be maintained throughout the project duration, which is expected to commence in December. We have shared the detour details on our social media pages and website, cityofwestland.com. I've spoken to a few of the businesses in the area over there already. I, I guess I won't go down the list, but there's quite a few great restaurants, restaurants, dry cleaners, small businesses, different agencies. So I just want to ask residents, don't forget about our great businesses right there on Wayne Road. It's going to be a tough time for them as they get through this year. Wayne County is again in, in charge of this construction project, just like they were with Mairman. I know a lot of folks are a little bit scared because of how badly the Mairman project went and how over budget and, and past, and with the great delays that, that happened there. But what I could, what I can do tonight is reassure you that I've spoken with Wayne County leadership, and I'll just repeat what they told me, which is that the problems on Mairman were very specific and very unique. And so this is not something that we would, it would be very unlikely to see a repeat of that kind of, those kind of delays. So we'll stay on top of Wayne County construction and communicate with them as much as we can, and make sure traffic is flowing safely. I'll be speaking to our, our police chief more about what's going on as far as stop signs and lights. But rest assured, we'll stay on top of this project and try to make sure Wayne County's moving along as quickly as possible. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, council president. Not much today. The only thing I didn't want to do, and I didn't, wasn't going to have any comments until I saw poor John Sullivan get up there and throw himself right on the train tracks in front of everybody. But, no, that was, that was really, really cool that you did that. People aren't aware, you know, there's, it's, it value, it would value you a bit to go ahead and learn how kind of the tax system works. We're lucky here in the city of Westland, we have a level four assessor. And the taxes are, they're, they're not subjective, right? I mean, it's basically, this is what it is, this is what the tax code says, this is how your tax is configured. It's not like poor John sits back there and goes, "Yeah, his, his deck looks a little bit nicer than the other guy's deck, or I know that guy, so we're going to charge him more in taxes." Because if that were the case, I'm sure they would charge me way more than they charged me. So, but I did get my notice in the mail, so you all sort of got it as well. So I, I didn't fall over and clinch my heart this year, so, so not too bad. But thanks, John, for doing that, and yeah, if you guys, keep an eye out for that form that John Sullivan told you about. With that, I'll see you guys in a couple weeks. Thank you, council president.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, Council President. I'm excited to see new buildings being built in our city. Hopefully this helps reduce some of the cost of people getting houses and finding places to live. And I hope this bridge is a little faster this time, blocking my way to Slurpee's quickly. That's all I have.
All right, all right. We will now hear from Councilwoman Bowman.
Thank you. I actually, I don't, I don't think I have anything tonight, I just, I'm realizing though, I'm like, I have to figure out another way to go down Wayne Road, and I don't know how to do that yet, so I'm curious to see where the detours are. Is it actually clo, can I, can I ask, I don't know, is it actually closed to, right now? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is that it? Okay, nice and easy. All right, Councilman Hornbuckle.
Man, y'all making me look bad. Whoever got the timer on my minute is going to be mad today. I got a few things I would like to speak on. The first thing, I would like to give thanks to Pascal and Nicole Jones for a great Black History Month event last week. A lady by the name of LaShine English came in, she's the director of UAW Region One, and the director of International UAW Women's Department. She was the keynote speaker, and she did a terrific job. She stayed, asked hard questions, and kept the audience engaged, and I thought that was really great. And it was good to meet a lady and understand her background, how she got where she got, and how she's fighting for women rights all around the world. So thank you for that. I do want to speak out against what happened last week again at, in front of the police station. Do want to say that Westland, I'm proud of, of what I seen on Westland news feed where the residents spoke out and said, "Hey, we not even going to give this person time of day." We understand that they have the right for freedom of speech, but freedom of speech against hate, we don't accept here. So I do want to thank the community for at least not giving the individual attention and letting you go on about your day. But do want to say, hate speeches like that in Westland is not acceptable. We do not stand for that. This is a community that wants to live safe, free, and make sure everyone is included and heard. So I do want to make sure I spoke, spoke against that incident. Now let's get to some better news. I want to give thanks to a couple of organizations that helped me out this weekend. We did, at the last minute, we did a give, a pop-up giveaway where we provided local, a local area with milk, ice cream, rice, and, I think that's it, white milk, chocolate milk. So I want to give thanks to the community of Free Will Baptist Church for allowing us to use their parking lot. I want to give thanks to Global Food Bank Group for providing rice to our community. They gave us rice packs that fed one individual nine meal, six meals, I think it was. That was awesome. I want to give thanks to Westland Community News for getting the word out there at the last minute. We found out about, put this together probably 6 o'clock Saturday night, and we had over 75 people come through and receive a meal. I want to give thanks to Councilwoman Melissa Stampy for coming out and helping promote and getting people out there to get a free meal to help them out through the week. One of the things I will say is that I'm working hard on is finding us some eggs. Right now, from my suppliers, eggs are just too high, and I would love to be able to provide our community with some eggs, relief from the egg prices. We could, we're going to, we plan on continuing doing these pop-ups all over the city as people come together and provide us with stuff to give to the community. So follow me on Facebook at Councilman Delano Hornbuckle to know where exactly in the city we're going to have these pop-ups as well. One thing I want to do, as you know, that the Great Lake Water Authority passed a bill, or passed a hike rate of eight percent to our rural bill, which I don't think we can afford anything else going up on us right now. We've been hit very hard lately. So council president, I would like to make a motion that the council work with the mayor and his administration to have the Great Lake Water Authority come in, have a study session to, so the community can be engaged with them and understand why they hike on our rate.
A public forum of some kind?
Yes.
We can talk about that offline, absolutely.
Yep, yep. But other than that, everyone, thank you for coming out. I appreciate your support in the community, and remember, we're going to continue doing these pop-ups throughout the city. So please follow me on Facebook. If you have any needs now, we do have some stuff where we can provide you with some items now, but follow me on Facebook, and I'll see you in two weeks. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you, councilmen, and thank you for leading us in the pledge this evening. A few things from me tonight. Number one, and Councilman Hornbuckle addressed it, like, if you were on social media, if you drove by Ford Road last week in front of the police station, there was an individual who had, we will say, uncouth, derogatory, bigoted signs being held up. And while someone does have the protected First Amendment right to free speech, and I want to commend our Westland Police Department for how they handled the situation and dealing with it, especially when it was right on their property, right in front of the station. While someone has protected First Amendment rights, we can still condemn hateful, bigoted speech when we see it. You know, there's no need to repeat what was on those signs, but we want Westland to be a community that is welcoming, tolerant, and inclusive of all people all across our community. And I think we all thoroughly condemn what the hell we saw there last week in front of the Westland Police Department, and know that that has no home and no place in our community. Councilman, thank you for the food giveaway. I happen to, you know, see what you did, so that's a great event, so kudos to you for doing that and providing people in need here in our community with some, some free food, and free milk, ice cream, and a meal to go along with it for the weekend. So thank you for doing that. And thank you to my colleague who's not here, Pro Tam Stampy, for stepping up and helping out as well. Boy, a few other things. It was brought up tonight in regards to Westland Mall. I'm going to bite my tongue because there's a lot I could say, but I kind of got to be respectful of that. We know the mall owner, and the city have had history before. There has been code and ordinance enforcement over there at the mall previously, and will continue to be when things are not up to code and ordinance, whether it's lights being out, issues in the parking lot, things in the building. We work, we work closely with the mall, or at least make an attempt to, on getting those things done. So know that it's happening. There's more that I could say, but I'll, I'll leave it at that for, for right now. We can, we can talk offline, I know we have before, about Westland Mall and its, its ownership. It was brought up by a resident, and I'll answer this question, about the $10,000 from Gassimity. That was a recommendation made by our community development block grant director, Joanne Campbell, for a specific project that is in the Norwayne area. The Norwayne community is a very hard-hit, economically disadvantaged, and disenfranchised area in the city, and there was a specific project made that that money was allocated to, the $10,000. I will say that moving forward, we have this year's CDBG Home Study Session coming up in March, coming up in just two weeks. If Gassimity wants to ultimately get more money for their summer program or another program, I would certainly encourage them to come and talk to members of the council here, encourage them obviously, and maybe they already have to talk to Director Campbell and the administration. I can't sit up here and, you know, make any promises, I'm only one person, but I think by no means was that an attempt to steal money away from Gassimity. It was simply a recommendation that this council was following from our community development block grant director, myself included on that. Couple of other things, it was mentioned that it is, the mayor mentioned, Women's History Month, and we have a lot of women here who have trailblazed in our community here in the city of Westland, specifically in serving their local community in our government. Women like Justine Barnes, who was the first ever elected woman here in the city of Westland. Women like Sandy Cesarelli, who served in all three branches of government, in the legislative branch as a councilwoman, as the first ever woman-elected mayor here in the city of Westland, and then as a judge in the city of Westland. and then as a judge in the City of Westland. We had women on this council like Cheryl Granstad, Sharon Scott, women who served as our clerk, like Eileen DeHart and Diane Fritz, and women who serve currently on this council, like Councilwoman Emily Bowman, Pro Tem Melissa Stampy, and Councilwoman Andrew Rakowski. And we are certainly grateful and thankful for all of their contributions and continued work and contributions here in the City of Westland as well. My former colleague, Councilwoman Tasha Green, who was a woman who served on this council as well. Speaking of women in history, two of the very most important women and firsts of their kind nationally in politics were Jeanette Rankin, who was the very first woman ever elected to Congress out of the state of Montana in, I believe, 1916. And then in 19, I believe it was 68, I could be wrong on this, correct me if I'm wrong, the first ever African-American and woman of color elected to Congress out of New York was Shirley Chisholm, who said, "If they won't give you a seat, bring a folding chair and bring your voice to Congress." So there were many trailblazing and pioneering women in politics as well, like Jeanette Rankin and Shirley Chisholm, and the many women who've contributed here in the City of Westland. And then I wanted to, even though I wasn't able to make the ceremony tonight, congratulate our four new officers who are being sworn in to the City of Westland. We wish them all the very best here as they start their career in service here in Westland, and we wish them all a long, safe, and healthy career here in Westland, and we look forward to having them in their service for many years to come. So thank you, chief. I apologize that I wasn't able to make it over there tonight, but we certainly look forward to having many years of service from those dedicated officers. And then with that, if anybody needs anything from me, you're always welcome to reach out to me on my city email, on Facebook at Councilman Mike McDermott, or with a caller text at 734-890-2146. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?